Meeting of the East Fishville Zoning Board, can we start with a roll call?
Mary Seminera.
James Meyer.
Aziz Ehson.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Thank you, can everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, this is our last meeting of 2018, so I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of the board members for your time, for your attention, for your site visits, and really for all that you do for the town and for this board specifically. It's been a pleasure working with each of you, and I look forward to continuing in 2019. This is November, our next meeting will be in January, so just specifically, our next, our upcoming meeting will be Tuesday, January 22nd, and it's gonna be one in February after that, but...
Twenty-sixth.
February 26th, thank you. In the event of snow, for anybody that is scheduled for a public hearing or to come to the January meeting, if town hall is closed, the meeting is canceled, and if the meeting is not postponed, the meeting is just canceled, we would then come back and just add anything from the January meeting to the February meeting. Alright, so just, but I have, can tell you that for all the times I've been saying this, we haven't had snow, knock on wood, so...
Keep saying.
So we're gonna keep saying it, exactly, since you're getting told ahead of time. The only thing we would ask if you are scheduled for a public hearing, that you please change the date on your sign, so that it does reflect the appropriate meeting date for your neighbors. Alright, on tonight's agenda, we have no actions, or we've been asked to adjourn items number one, six, seven, and eight, so there's gonna be no action on any of those, although I did notice that actually the very first thing on our agenda has no number. The agenda I'm looking at shows it as number one.
Yeah, mine as well, so it's, Windsor has no number.
So, yeah, Windsor has no, has no number.
Only the reviews are numbered.
Yeah, alright, um...
So Windsor is the one that was asked to be put over?
No, 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 so that one's fine. So, the first item, we do have one public hearing on this evening, this one application is an opportunity for any neighbors who wish to comment on it. Everything else on our agenda this evening is, is a review, so it's not subject yet to public comment. In some cases, it's gonna be the first time this board is actually looking at the application. So, I, we do have one set of minutes to approve, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd as amended, with some very small but significant amendments? So moved by Aziz?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And I, Tara's abstaining?
Yep.
And I do want to thank Lisa, the, the minutes really were, again, I think I remove, you know, what, I made an adjustment to one, and one line, and Aziz made an adjustment to one date, so otherwise, they really were really, really, really good, so, not a problem. Alright, so, let's move right on to business, our first item is a public hearing, Appeal 3890, Windsor, Richard Windsor, 361 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a one-foot sideline variance and a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot fence which is located in front of his house, as well as a 21-foot sideline variance for, for a pre-existing 12-foot by 23-foot detached garage built in 1900 pursuant to Sections 194-98 and 194-107 C of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Windsor, come on up. Okay, so, this act, this, your house is actually right down the street, so I noticed your sign.
Short walk, yeah.
So it was, you know, quite obvious that that was the, the property that we were looking at. So, we did have an opportunity to review your application last month, as, as we clearly state in the, that, the opening that I just read, your garage was built in 1900, so it's been there, it certainly was there well before code was put into place. You, though, there, you do have your, where your fence is, you do have a neighbor immediately next door, so the, your privacy, your fence is really to provide you some level of privacy, that's why you've asked for the extra height, and it extends, not all the way to the street, it extends just a little way beyond the front of your house, so, it, I saw it didn't impede any site distance, it's been there for years, so it hasn't been an issue per se, I don't know if your neighbor is here to speak for or against it, but, in reviewing it, your, the property is very well maintained, the garage matches the house, so, you know, I'm sure other board members had an opportunity to drive by it in the last month, so, any comments or questions from board members?
I did a site visit and I don't have an issue.
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Richard Windsor, 361 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot sideline variance and a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot fence located in front of his house, as well as a 21-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing 12-foot by 23-foot detached garage built in 1900? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Appeal Number 3890, applicant is Richard Windsor, is requesting a one-foot sideline variance and a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot fence which is located in front of his house, as well as a 21-feet sideline variance for a pre-existing 12-feet by 23-feet detached garage built in 1900 pursuant to Section 194-98 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Ehson, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt a standard decision and order, and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, because the fence has been there for approximately 10 years, and the garage is a former outhouse which has been there for over a hundred years, which has, that has been improved and matches the home, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the fence runs along the applicant's driveway which is parallel to the neighboring driveway. Therefore, the fence serves as a buffer between the two properties, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
All set with a, go, do I have to come and pick up anything, or any paperwork?
At this point, you would go to the building department, because you just have to make sure your building permit and anything else you need for that is all in order.
Alright.
Okay?
Thanks a lot.
Have a good evening.
Yep, you too, thank you.
Okay, so as I previously mentioned, there is no action on item number one, so we're gonna go to item number two. Appeal 3879, Roman, Samuel Roman, 3 Furland Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot height variance for a proposed six-foot fence which would be located in front of the house, and a two-foot setback variance for the section of the fence along the side property line pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Roman. Okay, at the previous meeting, we directed our clerk to send a letter, because that had been the second meeting that Mr. Roman had missed, so at this point, I'm gonna ask for a motion to deem this application to be abandoned, and he is entitled to a refund.
Because we didn't go into public hearing.
We didn't go to public hearing, right, I just wanted to be sure, since it's being abandoned, we haven't done one of these in a while, so...
It would be $5 less.
Can you just betify it? Yeah, I think, yeah.
I mean...
It's existing, so it might have been...
And if he's got issues dealing with the building department, the building department is free to go and pursue what they have to do, so... Okay, so...
Eight feet seventy-five, so refund seven.
So, do I have a motion to consider the application abandoned and to approve a refund of $70?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number two, Appeal 3879, oh, sorry, done, item number three. Appeal 3880, Rockwell, William Rockwell, 224 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 40-foot rear line variance for a proposed 30-foot by 40-foot dwelling which would replace an existing 800-square-foot pre-existing dwelling built in 1945 on .345 of an acre in an R2 zone pursuant to Section 194-17 and 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Roman. Sorry, Mr. Rockwell, sorry. Okay, so when last, come on up to, so you're at the microphone there, thank you for coming. When last we were here, you were looking to replace the existing house, because, again, it's, it's over 60 years old, at this point, over 70 years old, you were looking to demolish these, or do something with these, you wanted to increase the size of it, and so you were actually asking to move it back within 10 feet of the rear property line.
Yep.
You own the neighboring property, so, right now, you would be the most impacted person. And so we did ask you to consider, we raised some, some concerns, and we asked you to reconsider what your other options are.
Yes, and that's what I did. I took your advice, or some of your advice, and I had my survey guy redraw it, so it was within all the setbacks.
Okay.
And I was able to utilize the back of the existing house as the new front wall of the new proposed house.
Okay.
And it still falls within all the setbacks.
So you don't need a variance anymore?
Apparently not.
Okay, so, you're, so we can, you're gonna withdraw your application and...
Well, whatever I have to do, yeah, if that's what I do, that's what I do.
If you don't need a variance, you don't need to be before our board, and thank you for doing that, because...
Yeah.
Really, that's the best way to work with, so...
I was just, I was just trying.
No, that's, that's, that's fine.
You can get a refund?
Yes.
So do I have a motion to recognize the withdrawal of the application and to issue a refund of, well, but $5?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
After considering.
And Pam, you know, the clerk will make sure you get your refund back.
Okay, so my next step is I go to building department?
You deal with the building department.
And all the architectural stuff.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Number four. Appeal 3882, Klaus Garage Inc., Dave Lawrence, Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage Inc., 2619 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use and interpretation, oh, they were asking for the interpretation, of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance in the 100-foot buffer requirement on Route 52, in order to continue to out, the outside display of cars pursuant to Section 194-86, 194-16, and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Would you like to join us?
Oh, yeah.
You're up.
Gonna late the numbers.
That's okay, you're, actually, you're right on time, so, that's okay. Right along. So, good evening.
Good evening.
When, when, yeah, just pass them, we'll pass them around. Okay, when last we met, we asked you to provide some additional information and to do a little bit of homework for us. I don't know if Rick needs to get one down there, there's an extra copy here, so, and to particularly, we were interested, because we, representation was being made about used auto sales on the property. And, you know, ultimately, you're here to be able to continue the used sales, used car sales, to be able to, to really clearly neaten up the area and define the use of space within the 100-foot buffer, because it's along the state road, and you're, I'm also seeing that related to the continued use of auto sales, you're looking for an interpretation. So, can you, you've now given us a plan, can you take us through what you're giving us?
Alright, so this is a little different from the last plan, in that we have taken off the proposed new building.
Building, right.
So this plan envisions keeping the existing Klaus Garage structure as is, maintaining the existing automobile service facility as is, and maintaining the sale of used cars. But what we did in this scenario is, we put, we would like to pave a parking lot, and in paving the parking lot, we are also going to provide a nicely articulated landscaping plan to enhance the view from Route 52.
Okay.
So we'd like to park cars within that buffer, I mean, it makes sense to have cars up front, so when people driving by, they could see the cars, as opposed to pushing them way back. Cars are there now, cars have been in that, in those, in the area that we're defining as the used car area for years, you know, there's maybe several cars for sale at some point, one car for sale, many more. For many, many, many years, cars have been lined up along the eastern property line up to Route 52, so we're looking to channel this into a structured parking area, create a, a new DOT entrance to the site, so like, the animal hospital right to the immediate west is under construction right now, and they have a brand-new DOT entrance, so we could do the same thing here, provide some nice plantings, put up a new sign, and Klaus Garage will remain Klaus Garage forever.
Okay, so, since we last met, you did some research related to the previous owner's ability to do car sales, and...
What we found is that there was no DMV dealer permit, but it was issued to the current owner.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, this is Dave, Dave Lawrence, owner and operator, local resident of Klaus Garage. DOT, DMV, I keep mixing up, DMV issued him the dealer, the inspection, and the, what's the other one?
Repair shop.
Repair shop. So he's got the three DMV registrations, but, we had thought that, that carried from way back when Klaus was, evidently in our research, we couldn't find the DMV registration for the used cars. However, we did find an old newspaper clipping from the late 70s or early 80s showing Klaus Garage with used cars on it, we all know...
Have a copy of that for our file, or no?
I submitted, I submitted that, right?
Oh, you got that, okay.
So there is an old newspaper article, I think everybody in town realizes and knows that cars have been sold on and off here for 30, 40 years. That's the best we can do right now. The prior owner is not willing to commit to any kind of affidavit for whatever reasons he has, so, here we are. The owner, Dave, would really like to spruce up the site, and I think, I think the town would as well. So, I guess we're asking for, at this point in time, based on my understanding, what we're asking for now is a variance to provide a parking area within the 100-foot buffer to Route 52.
Okay. That's it, or you're still looking for the interpretation about the automobile service facility and used car sales?
Well, we'd like that interpretation to, you know, so we can formalize the fact that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use of the site with the automobile service facility. I guess, from my understanding, that this board cannot opine on the used cars, that we would have to take that back to the planning board and, and try to work through a special permit from the planning board for the used cars.
Well, we, what we can do is do a review of the code and see if the code would allow, if, if the code would allow the used sales here at this site, because my understanding is it's not, it's all, it's specific to Route 82, but we can, we'll do a review of the code.
Okay.
Pam, we are gonna need a copy of the code here for us to at least read it into the record? If you don't mind, if you could pull that out for us, but, let's look, real, can we look at the...
I have my copy.
Okay, alright, that would be great, but let's start, though, with a review of the plan that you've given us.
Alright, so I submitted to you a plan today, so, the parking, we're trying to separate the two, so we, to the west of the entranceway, which would service both the used car area and the auto service facility, so that, that we would provide a new DOT entrance at Route 52 and, and pave that lane and curb it. We'd provide landscaping, not exactly as I've already shown, I'm gonna fix it up a little bit, but show nice landscaping, we would screen a little bit, if you could look at the picture on the lower left corner, there's like a split rail fence with some low flowers and stuff, we could put that along Route 52, as well as put it in the back line of the cars to separate, visually separate, the service facility with the used cars. Right now, our curb line is roughly at where the cars are parked now, we're at about 12 and a half feet off the property line, and we're about 19, 20 feet off, 20, 21 feet off of the edge of payment of Route 52.
Okay, but, the, the area that cars are parked now is just because that's where a, frankly, a load of gravel was dumped. Your own aerial is not...
They were parked, they were parked there before the gravel, after the gravel.
Okay, but Keith, if you look at your own aerial that you've got in the corner there?
Yeah.
That area's not there. I'm sure this aerial's not that old.
I, I, I don't know, that's from parcel access, so we can look into when that, those aerials were taken.
So, it, it was, there was no question they were being parked along the driveway?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not talking, I'm not disputing the gravel is there or wasn't, it, it wasn't there, it is there now, but what I'm saying is, whether it was there or not, there was, he always had cars there before the gravel.
Right. So the, the issue becomes, dealing with that 100-foot buffer, obviously, this board's interest in, is always to minimize a variance.
Right.
So, you know, 12 and a half feet off the property line is awfully close.
We could consider moving that curb line to 20 feet, but then, at, at that point, it gets to the point where, you know, we're, we're gonna lose visual of the cars traveling east and west, so, it's important for, in, in the owner's mind, for the sale of cars to have a visual for drive-bys, so, we keep pushing that back, we're gonna lose that ability, or reduce that ability. But we will, we won't park any cars in the southeast corner of the site, that will clean that up and just become grass with a couple plantings.
Right or left, the old Leon's TV?
It's to the east, no, wait, no, I'm sorry.
That's why, I think it's to the...
It's, it's towards Hyatt's, yeah, it's west, it's towards Hyatt's.
West, right, yeah, okay. They're now doing, uh, building rehab, whatever, something there, right next door?
Oh, right next door here, immediately, right, within, the building's going up, like, within 10 feet of this property line is the new, Hopewell Animal Hospital.
Right, and I, it's, it's awfully close to the road as well, so...
Well, it's 100 feet off. I have the plans right here.
Okay, alright, because it would be helpful to see what the other properties are, how they are in, whether any of them are also using the buffer. The Plaza did come in years ago, so they got the ability to do some, well, they did stormwater, but I think they even have some parking in the buff, in the 100-foot buffer as well.
Here's, here's their plan. This is the front of the new building.
Right.
The 100-foot's right in here somewhere, I mean, so they got the entranceway and maybe a parking space or so, within the 100-foot of, of the property line.
But, so that's, as an amended site plan approval through the planning board, okay. So which kind of begs the question...
But they do have stormwater management systems in the buffer as well.
When are you going to the planning board?
Well, I'm, I can't, I don't think I can go back until I get through here unless...
But you, you've got a submission into the planning board?
Yes, we, we were referred back to here.
Okay.
Went to the planning board, they referred us to here, and here we are, three months later, trying to figure, still figuring things out.
Okay. But partly because you weren't, you didn't come last month at your request.
Correct, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying.
Okay, so, you're gonna incorporate stormwater management in somewhere, again, that's not the purview of this board, but I'm trying to figure out, why is there a plain grass area behind the parking, and can't we move it back a little bit? I, I get you want to be closer to the road for visual sales, for, you know, for...
Well, I think...
Understand, New York, Route 52 is a state road.
Right.
And at some point, it's very heavily traveled, at some point, New York State may want to widen the road.
Sure.
Even to just put a turning lane in, or, you know, some median, and the ability to do that is gonna be very limited, when you're only 12 and a half feet off your property line.
I, I think we could move it to 20.
Okay.
You know, I think we could do that. I, I can't move it to 50, because then it's just, it's just too far. And if you look along that corridor, there, I mean, there's plenty of, of the existing properties that have pavement within 100 feet, parking within 100 feet, you got the Plaza, you got Hyatt's, you got...
Yeah, but they're not 12 and a half feet off, that's the, my, that's why I'm, I'm...
I get it.
Hyatt's closed, but they were probably there when it was a dirt road.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry?
I said Hyatt's was probably there when it was a dirt road.
But if you go down that whole strip, there's a lot of parking within 100 feet, all the way down, even to Heritage, even to Heritage Square, there's parking slots.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they, they came in and got ability, they got permission to be able to use the buffer for some of their parking.
Right.
No, so no question, it's, it's allowed, it's just, we, even that, we had to push them back a little bit, okay?
I remember that, I was, I was there with you.
I know, I know. So...
So, I mean, the, the opportunity here is to clean up the site as well, right?
Understood.
So, we can accomplish that by doing this, and, and in the end, you know, Dave will have something that he's gonna be proud of, and the town will be happy with.
So how many parking spaces, or how many used cars are we talking about?
Well, he would like 20 to 25, what, the way I laid it out, it worked out to be 27. You know, that's a modest number of cars, it'd be neatly laid out in a parking lot, it'd look neat and clean, it'd be paved.
Alright, well, any comments or questions from board members? Let's stick to this issue first.
I saw the photograph that you had submitted, do you have a better copy which links the garage to the used car sale, because it just seems to be a photograph of a...
And it was handwritten in saying 1973.
Handwritten in, yeah, I mean...
I don't know if we have, do you have the original of that newspaper clipping?
I forwarded that to you, I've made a...
No, the original, the actual, did you keep it, do you have it?
I probably have it somewhere, not on here.
I don't, I mean, there was an old...
Yeah, because we need, we need some, some stand, a little bit more proof than just handwritten, handwritten.
Yeah, somebody handwrote on there, 1973, so it wasn't like the date was printed as part of the...
Yeah, when I, when I bought the place, when I was throwing out the old desk, I was pulling out the center drawer, it was jammed and...
It's always interesting what you find in those circumstances.
It's all just slid out, and there was a picture of Klaus and his partner town, he had the picture of the building in the background, it says Klaus Garage Repairs, Used Car Sales, and...
Yeah, it didn't say, the, the one that you've submitted doesn't say all of that stuff.
I have, I have a picture on my phone, let me just...
Well, I submitted, I submitted, I can't find what I submitted here.
Yeah, well, we, that's what we have in the file.
Yeah, right, you have it, right.
Like I said, it's just handwritten on there, the date.
We, we didn't write it. You can tell by the picture how old it is.
You can see it's old, it's old, I mean...
Oh, yeah, no, there's no question, I'm not, you know, I'm not disputing that it's old, it's just...
Son of a gun, I can't, alright.
Okay, so...
I can't find it, alright.
No, the reason is because the issue of, of a used car lot right at the entrance of, I mean, at the entrance of the Klaus Garage on Route 52, you have some evidence, but I need, you know, a little bit more stronger evidence than what was submitted, if possible. But you're willing to go back 20 feet now, for, for starters?
We're willing to go take the curb line to 20 feet to the, to the front property line, yes.
So would that push the wooden split rail fence another eight feet or something like that?
I don't, I didn't understand, you're taking the curb line?
The front of the car, parked area for the cars.
Back to 20 feet.
Back to 20 feet, so instead of being 12 and a half feet back, it's gonna push it back seven and a half feet more.
Yeah.
This line here, we'll push it back 20 feet, so, move it back about eight feet.
I mean, I would, from my recollection and knowing that he did a lot of work, he was originally known for German vehicles, but I never remember him parking up that close. He had a line that went back from where his repair shop was, and it went back and forth a little bit, but I would say it never got closer than 50, 60 feet to the road.
We're not, we're not saying we're replicating what Klaus did, what we're trying to do is formalize and compartmentalize and...
I'm just telling you what...
Keep it structured.
I'm telling you what my recollection is from my years of living there, nearby, since 1989.
And James, not to cut you off, there's a section that's actually paved, it's partly grass, like, as you come in the driveway, going like, towards that area there?
Get closer to the microphone, please, Dave?
Oh, yeah. James, not to cut you off, there's an existing part of the driveway, as soon as you pull in to the left, like, right where that area, where the gravel, it's all paved, I didn't even do that's all before, when I bought the place, you could tell it was all paved, it's all broken up, it's a good section probably from me to you, probably, you know, 12 feet It's a good section probably from me to you, probably, you know, twelve feet wide from, you know, a long time ago, you know?
I'm just telling you what my recollection is from nineteen eighty-nine.
I'm just letting you know what was there when I bought the place, it was, it's all paved and broken up. This is what I had here. This is what looks handwritten, and this is the way that I found, that's the way I took a picture of it, I could, that's what they had.
Okay, so that, that's the picture that you have.
That's just...
What we have is just a representation of what you have. Yeah, that, that's what we have. Right.
That I didn't write in, I don't know why.
That's, that's what we have, don't worry.
No, but again, what I would suggest is if you can take this image, because that's a better image than what was submitted, because what was submitted is just a portion of it.
Yeah, 'cause that, I don't know why, I don't know why that's written on there.
No, no, because it has Neptune, but this is a Neptune Road address. So I have no idea what that is, location is.
I don't know.
Yeah, so that's why we need a better address.
There was this, there's a few other things as well. I'll find them, there's, there's that, and then there was another one.
Yeah, the address was cut off of the picture that you gave us.
Yeah, there's Neptune, there was another one, twenty-six nineteen, there's a few... I'll open up the thing, 'cause I took all that stuff, I gotta find it.
So you need to have a bigger, you know, picture and all that.
Yep.
What did it say?
Yeah, there's always like dates, and there's a couple of pictures I gotta find too, there was this one.
What is it saying, Neptune? What does that mean?
There was down here, an address down here, and a bottom here, we'll zoom in here.
It's not showing it's on Route 52.
So, I'll be up here, yeah. It looks like the building in the background and everything. But there is, there is another old clipping that I have up fine with the address on it.
So let's look at the interpretation. Jim, if you don't mind me reading...
Section one ninety-four dash eighty-six, Automobile Service Facility.
Yes.
Addet three twenty-seven nineteen ninety-seven by Local Law Number two dash one nine nine seven. Special permit. As provided in section one ninety-four dash sixty-eight, the zoning Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to establish an automobile service facility in the B-one zone, provided that the board finds that the application meets all the general conditions of Article Nine and further meets all the applicable conditions set forth herein. A, the property shall have at least one hundred feet of frontage on New York State Route eighty-two north of its intersection with Beekman Road and derive access therefrom. B, all automobile service work shall take place within a fully enclosed building. C, sheet metal construction shall not be allowed. Buildings on site shall be constructed of concrete, brick, wood, or other similar materials as approved by the board reviewing the architectural features of the building. D, where next to or in front of property in a residential zone, buildings shall be placed such that work base and parking area, parking are oriented away from residential zones. E, the following minimum standards shall be met. Minimum lot size, point seven five acres. Minimum frontage, one hundred and fifty feet. Minimum lot width, one hundred feet. Minimum front setback, fifty feet. Minimum side and rear setback, twenty-five feet. Minimum side and rear setback from property in a residential zone, fifty feet. Floor area ratio, point two. F, setback and landscape buffer. Landscaping, screening, buffer areas shall be provided as set forth in section one ninety-four dash one oh nine of the East Fischko Town Code. G, setback and landscape buffer for parking areas. All parking facilities shall meet the minimum parking setback and landscaping requirements of section one ninety-four dash one one six of the East Fischko Code. That's it.
Okay.
What is the parking setback?
Yeah, that's an interesting thing, that there's a, you're gonna meet the parking setback in the buffer, within the buffer, or...
If you wanna read that, I can read that as well.
Well, the parking within the buffer is not related to the service facility.
Well, this, okay, what concerns me, well, except that we already said this, is the fact that this, I'm not sure what you want us to interpret, because this is specific to it being allowed on Route eighty-two.
Right, so I mean, what we have is a pre-existing non-conforming use of the site, even though it's, it's not on Route eighty-two, it's...
Not authorized.
Well, if you look at one ninety-four dash one sixteen, interestingly, even if it does have a parking requirement for Route fifty-two, look at one ninety-four dash one sixteen, improvements, subdivision B one, front yard landscape buffer for parking areas. Any office, commercial, or industrial development on Route fifty-two shall have a minimum fifty-foot suitably landscaped buffer strip along the Route fifty-two frontage. No parking or structures shall be placed within this buffer strip. We have that section applicable to this situation at least as well.
And Keith, there's a, there's another section you're gonna have to take a look at for interpretation purposes. In the definitions for automobile service facility, in relevant part, it reads, permitted accessory uses in an automobile service facility may include sale of parts, tires, oil, or similar items as determined by the zoning Board of Appeals, should not include car or truck washes, or the sale of food, convenience items, or gasoline. So it doesn't specifically say that you can sell used cars, it says you can sell different parts.
Doesn't say we can't sell used cars.
Right, so, I mean, that's for the board to decide how to interpret that.
Okay.
And which section is that?
That's in the definition section, one ninety-four dash three.
Okay.
One ninety-four what, dash what?
Three. It's automobile service facility, and it's formerly called garage. There's a longer definition, but that's the relevant part that the zoning board's really gonna have to take a look at.
All right, so where does this leave us?
So a discussion from board members. Because in essence, you'd be looking for a variance for the fifty-foot parking.
Yes. And the hundred-foot setback. 'Cause we have some parking within fifty feet and some parking outside of fifty feet, but, but within a hundred, so we'd have to, I think, get a variance for both.
Right. Which board actually would grant the, we would do the interpretation, but which board would actually give the authorization that used cars can happen here?
It would be based on your interpretation, I think, and then, I mean, I think they'll have to get site plan approval also, but that would feed into whether or not you guys grant the special permit, 'cause the way the code's written, the special, this is in the zoning board, uh, special permit section, so the zoning board would have jurisdiction.
Okay.
It would or would not?
Zoning board has jurisdiction, yes.
For a special permit?
Yes.
To have used car sales?
For the automobile service facility.
For the service facility, what about used car sales?
So used car sales, um, that's part of the interpretation. We're determining whether or not the used car sales fits within the automobile service facility.
So this all happens here, and if we get through all this, then we go back to the planning board for the site plan?
That appears to be the process, yeah, I think.
Okay.
Next step, I think staff will have to confer also after, you know, speaking, and now that you've fleshed out your plan a little bit, but, um, I think that, that seems to be the process from here.
Okay.
Yeah, remember last time we were really, spent a lot of time on the expansion of the building?
Right, that's off, that was off the table.
That was outside of the realm of the authority of this board to consider expanding a non-conforming use beyond the fifty percent. So that's not an option anymore, so now let's focus more on the issues that are relevant for this board. So interpretate, interpreting the, the code, you're really looking to see whether it's allowed, the use is allowed on fifty-two, when the code is pretty specific about use on eighty-two. But if it's not prohibited, then is, is it allowed?
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, on Route fifty-two, I can't remember the address, but there is a used car...
Down the road, down by the Wickopi General.
It's right by...
Wickopi General Store.
Hook Road.
No, this is the, by the Wickopi, yeah.
Route fifty-two and Hook Road.
Oh, East Fischko, so there is one right...
Well, that's what I was, that was what I was...
Mr. Lawrence's request, that was actually his business, and it was supposed to be, not necessarily parking cars there, it was supposed to be people would call and be there.
I think we had six cars, we had six or eight cars.
Six cars were allowed, very limited use of the site because of the really inability for any other business to make a use of that site.
Right, but nonetheless, it's used car sales in a B-one zoning district within a hundred feet of the, within a hundred-foot buffer.
But I think we did it in the context of a use variance, that's what we have to look at.
I don't, no, we didn't do a use variance for that.
All right, that's what we gotta look at, as to how that was...
That was the, that was the planning board.
Because it was very specific, I know we had to go back and get approval from the New York State DOT for the use of the right-of-way to be able to even get the, enough cars in there.
Yeah, I don't think we, we, I don't think we got that far with the DOT, I don't remember dealing with...
I think we got a letter, if I, I wasn't your engineer on that, so I don't know.
No, you weren't, you weren't.
So, but I, I was on that side. I think he had gotten a letter from the DOT allowing, you know, 'cause not, part of the cars would be within the right-of-way property, but that was it. If I recall correctly, it was six or eight cars you got approved for, people were supposed to call up and...
Yeah, I think what the concern was, if the people pulling out of Hook Road is the site distance of that, that was their only concern, and that was it, then we put those parking curbs in and, or whatever, and that was it.
Yes, but part of your argument was the fact that that site, the bike shop hadn't made a go there, and so the other uses there hadn't been able to be successful.
Went in for a change of usage, that was the idea, come in front of the board and...
That property's so small, you can't...
It's so hard to do it.
Right, that's, that's different here. You, I don't think you can say that this property is not economically viable without the used car sales.
Well, it's been part of what's been going on there, and it's counted on as part of the income of the site, so...
And not to jump and cut you off, but...
Don't cut me off.
Well, I have a couple of employees that are there that I kept on from before I bought the place, they've been there a long time, and they're willing to, I didn't take this with them, you know, they've obviously seen cars being sold before I purchased, but they've been selling cars there all the time, they've been there. And actually, when I bought the place, I think about two weeks later, a lady called up, and she said, oh, I had this, bought this car, she was from Klaus, needed to bring it in, had some issues, whatever. I said, well, I know, well, he doesn't own it anymore, I own it, and so I honored, you know, a little warranty for her to, you know...
Yeah, I don't any, I don't think anybody's disputing the fact that there have been car sales there, okay?
It's not, yeah, it's, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not a, it's not a secret, everybody knows what it was, you know?
How do we formalize it?
Right, and I think the idea is we're all looking to make sure that if we have the opportunity, let's clean up the site.
That's fine, yeah, we'll do whatever we gotta do, it's fine, I'm happy to do whatever the...
That said...
I mean, that's really what's driving the situation.
Right.
Same thing with the service facility at Hyatt's, it's been there forever.
The dilemma is, again, once again, for this board, is because we're asking, being asked for an interpretation, if we say that you, the car sales are allowed on this site on Route fifty-two, then we're saying car sales are allowed anywhere on Route fifty-two.
Well, that, well, I, I think the issue, I don't, I'm not sure I agree with that, I would have to think more, I'm thinking out loud. Again, it's, it's a maybe pre-existing use prior to this legislation, so once it's already there, it can be taken away.
Unauthorized pre-existing use. An unauthorized pre, you didn't have a DMV approval to be doing that.
Well... That's the, that's the dilemma.
Well, we has one now.
I'm just defining, I'm just defining the dilemma that's faced with us, and does it necessarily mean that if it was pre-existing, I don't know.
Well, I don't think there are any other sites on Route fifty-two that have the same situation that we have here, other than maybe Hyatt's.
This is something that, yeah, I'm not gonna sit and vote tonight, it's gonna have to be thought about, and it's a decision made.
I guess the question is, do we wanna set this up for public hearing for January, give us a little bit more time to research it, give Ethan and Dave a little bit more time to do a little bit more research on this, so that at least we can get input from anybody else that wants to weigh in on this issue.
Yeah, I have no problem with a public hearing.
But I, I think we're, I, I think we need more, a little bit more insight from what the impact of this could be, but we would get that in the context of a public hearing.
I don't know if we are ready, I mean, honestly speaking, I don't think we have enough information, because the previous, this is the second meeting, okay? The first review was a different review, now it's the second review, which is different.
Well, it's, it's not, this was here. They did, they were asking for the car sales last time around, 'cause we definitely had that discussion.
If I remember correctly, with the building.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All we did was take the building out.
Yeah, all they did was take the building out, so...
Okay, but it was not, you know, again, it's a...
I don't know how much more information we can get, other than try to get the newspaper clipping, a cleaner copy of that, and...
Well, 'cause we were trying to get a handle on how many, when we talk about car sales, how many car sales were we really talking about?
Five hundred.
How many, and over what period of time, forty years?
You know, I, I don't know, Dave's been doing pretty well with it. I don't know if it's one a week, two a week, ten a week.
Right.
I don't know if it's ten a month, ten a year, I, I, you know, we can, if you want, we could try to come up with that information for the public hearing.
You tried, again, we did, we asked you, we thank you for doing your, the due diligence that you did to get the information that you have. I do have one question. Your DMV ability to sell, is that specific to this site? It is, okay.
Like I said in the last meeting, when I applied for the license, they automatically granted it. Typically, like I said, where it's hard, DMV, it's very hard to get that, they come out and inspect the site DMV, that you have to have seven or eight, whatever, does anything there, you have to have a bolt, a lockbox for titles, all this requirements.
Okay.
So when I went, they automatically granted it, they assumed, I don't know, someone pushed the wrong button on the computer, or, but they automatically granted, oh, Klaus Garage, like, you know, they know it's been there a while, so they just sent everything, that was it, great, thank you, and...
Okay, so it is specific to this site?
Yes, yeah, has, has the address on the business license, I have a copy of it probably on my phone, it shows, you know, um...
We could submit those if you want.
Yeah, I would like to see that, and the thing is, I mean, we're looking at a parking, a used car parking lot for approximately thirty cars. So it's not a small little six-person car, I mean, so you're looking at thirty cars, and that, that could grow, because...
Well, I, it's, we're actually showing twenty-seven. He, he wanted somewhere between twenty and twenty-five, but the way I laid it out, and it worked out, it came out to twenty-seven, so we can reduce that number to twenty-five or twenty-four.
I don't know if we had to look at, at the back, you get a little close to the sideline, I don't, didn't read that whole section as to whether or not we have to worry about the sidelines.
I don't think there's a setback on the side.
And what I meant by seven cars, what I meant by seven cars is DMVs required, you have to at least, at least have seven parking lots for used cars.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's their, you know, their minimum requirement.
I don't know why I can't find what I submitted. That newspaper article's killing me, I thought I, I know we take copies.
Ten foot sideline?
You look at one sixteen, yeah, one, ten feet at least.
Looks like a ten-foot sideline for parking.
So if that front area is twelve and a half feet...
Yeah, I'm just pointing out, you could probably move it over a little bit, it could still fit your seven spots in there.
Or maybe you lose one spot further back, in that back row. Keith?
Excuse me?
It appears that you have to have a ten-foot side yard buffer for parking.
No.
Yes.
Section one sixteen.
Okay, then I guess we're gonna have to give you an interpretation of that part of the code too?
One ninety-four, what was that?
One sixteen.
One sixteen, so a ten-foot for the parking lot?
So it appears you may just lose the last parking space in the back row.
Okay, we can knock that off. Like I said, we can knock it, we could pare it down to twenty-five, or, right now it's twenty-seven. It, just the way it laid out, that's how the number, and it ended up that way, so, yeah, I can, I could take that one out.
Okay, I don't see any handicap parking spaces, but again, that's an issue more for the planning board, not our board, so...
That would be for the customer parking as well, though, not for the, that's all used cars you're showing in that spot.
There should be at least one for every twenty-five spaces, so there should be something.
Yeah, that says it's part of the planning board's, um...
Yeah, it's...
Some trees also.
Yep, yep, so...
I mean, Dave's intent, the owner's intent is to obviously make this place look nice, so we'll, we'll put together a real nice landscaping package and...
I think we have enough for us to go to planning board, recognizing that they have time to clear it up a little bit, but let's set a deadline for any additional information to get to this board, so we have time to review it.
So how are we gonna advertise it?
So also, I recall now a conversation I had with Tom Wood, where he did tell me too, that the main interpretation right now is, um, whether the sale of cars happened, and whether, at the same, whether that's a pre-existing use, he, it wasn't as much of a concern about the special permit aspect, whether it falls in there.
Okay, that's good news.
So in the context of a public hearing, we need to get some information on a record, kind of thing?
Right, yes, correct.
About the used car sales.
About the used car sales and...
Affidavit from a former employee, or something like that?
Well, that'll certainly help, right, and then the board has to make the determination, so...
I understand, but I, I mean, I, there's not much information I can get.
Right, right, no, I mean, if the...
And I think we all know that the cars have been sold there, so I don't know how to prove it, per se.
So if I...
I am still on the fence right now, because I'm, I'm just, you know, all of...
And that's, that's what I'm saying, hold on, let's, let's, if our next meeting is not till January twenty-second, if we give you a deadline of January fifth, or something like that, January, whatever, two weeks before, so that we have to be able to have information for us to be able to do our review, so we're all prepared for a public hearing, can we work with that? Otherwise, you're gonna have to come back in January, and then we'll schedule you for a public hearing in February.
What's, what's January fourth, what day of the week is that?
It's January twenty-second, and then one is February.
January fourth is a Friday, so...
Or end of December, I mean, you know, you don't need to go to...
You do January fourth.
So the first Friday in December.
We shut down between Christmas and New Year's.
Pam has time to get it to us, so we have it for at least two full weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
But how are we advertising it? But how are we advertising it?
That's, that's what he's asking for.
Okay.
I don't see that that's changing.
Well, no, it's...
Anybody disagree, or?
Yeah, I think we have now. Again, with what we're doing, I'm comfortable with the public hearing.
The way it's written on the agenda.
Yeah, you're okay with that? That's, 'cause that's what you're looking for.
We're looking for the interpretation of the existing use. We're looking for the used car sales and the, what's the variance for parking within a hundred-foot buffer? Do we include the fifty-foot buffer, or is that...
Well, if we're giving it within a hundred-foot buffer, is the fifty-foot buffer, we probably have to make a reference to the code section for the fifty-foot buffer, Pam, for the...
Hundred sixteen.
One sixteen, one ninety-four dash one sixteen?
Yep.
Why don't you just add that?
It's here.
No, no, it's one sixteen.
Sixteen is there.
One one six.
Yeah, so it's one one six.
That's what I was referencing for the fifty-four.
Not, so it's six, it's one one six, not one six?
Oh, one in here?
Yeah.
One nine four dash one one six.
Okay.
She has it just as sixteen. Okay.
Deadline is, uh, January fourth?
So motion to advertise.
Well, one ninety-four...
Sixteen, though.
That's sixteen also was applicable.
Yeah, sixteen and one one six.
Right, that's fine.
Sixteen and one one six.
That's fine.
So six, now, one ninety-four dash sixteen or one ninety-four dash one one six?
Both.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sixteen is the scheduled...
And we also need one ninety-four three in there also, 'cause that's the, that's the definition of automobile service facility.
One ninety-four two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's advertised properly, then I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. So motion to advertise.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you in January.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Yeah, yep.
Keith, you need to, you need information about posting a sign, please? Pam will give it to you. All right, item number five, Appeal three eight eight five, LMD Properties, Property Holdings LLC. LMD Property Holdings LLC is requesting a variance to build a house on an undersized lot, point seven acres in an R-two zone, at four seventy Shenandoah Road, Hopewell Junction, which was created in nineteen sixty-two pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations, properties and the ownership of Matika. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Corode. I'm representing LMD Property Holdings. So, I was here, I don't know if it was two meetings ago, I think it was two meetings ago.
Right.
And we still, we're, our plan would still be to build a home that would meet all setbacks, and so the variance would be for an undersized lot. We're not changing any of our application. But we, we received a memo, and I don't know if everyone on the...
Yeah, we got it also.
So, yeah, our, our application's still the same, that we, we would like to build on a undersized lot and a variance for that.
Okay, so, um, when you were last here, we had a discussion about the fact that this lot was created right around the time that I eighty-four, that the owner was compensated for the loss of the property that would have made this a fuller, a larger-sized lot when the, with the taking from New York State DOT as part of I eighty-four.
Right.
So, um, the owner has continued to just maintain this as a separate lot.
Correct, and paid taxes.
And the owner does continue to live in the house next door.
Correct.
But this is an R-two zone, so it is a zone that does require two-acre zoning, and you're asking us to approve a lot that's point seven acres, okay?
So, I, I see that in the minutes, or the agenda, it says R-two, and I, I know in the memo, it also says, says R-two. When I look at the map, the zoning map, it looks like it's R-one, and I...
Okay. Who's, who files the application and who makes the review of what the zone is? That's not done by us. That's why I'm asking the question. So, you filed the application saying it was an R-one or an R-two?
I'd have to look to see if I have my application.
Is this R-one up here?
Their application said R-one.
Yeah, Tom was saying R-two in his memo.
I think also your attorney at one point made a reference that it was an R-two. Okay.
And I think Dutchess County G.I.S. also makes reference to it as an R-two.
Okay. So that, yeah, that very well could be the history of it, yeah. Um, and I, I know when we spoke, I, I think I misspoke when I was here. I said R-two, and then the board said we thought it was R-one, and then, so I, I'm not, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I, you said, you, I'm just kinda repeating the argument that you had said, it's much harder, you're, you're being consistent in your argument, that it's much harder to approve an R-point seven and R-two than R-one.
Well, you're, you're asking for a significant variance.
Right, I, I see that there is a difference there. So, I don't know if, if I made a mistake in the application, or wherever the, wherever that happened. I don't know if it helps to, to look at the zoning map, or...
You have a copy there? That's why you're trying to bring it to our attention.
What's that?
You have a copy?
Yeah, or I could show it to you on my phone. Either way, whatever's better.
Why don't you just show us what you have, so I can...
I know, it's, it's kinda pasted, but...
Was this, is the issue that this lot, the zoning changed, and at the time that the lot was originally created, it was an R-one?
When it was created, it was R-one.
But it was up zones?
You tell me that...
Well, this is light yellow.
Yeah.
And it's R-one.
Yeah.
And it's an R-one three.
R-one, R-two is, this is R-two. East Talk Road, you're on Shenandoah.
Okay.
Which, what is your, what are you saying your property is?
I'm saying that the property...
Is it okay to mark it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Griffin Lane, I believe this is where it all starts to become R-two. I believe this is all R-one, and the property should be, I don't know if it's this one or this one. I can show you on parcel access.
But parcel access is not the be-all.
So you're between Griffin Lane and...
That's where it says R-two?
It's north of Griffin Lane.
And the eighty-four, yeah.
Correct, correct.
So he's saying it's one of these properties there. You put a red dot on it just so everybody can see what he's stating, which if that map is correct, it would seem to be an R-one.
Yeah, but that's not the, that's...
Man.
So the yellow is R-one?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is R-two. The real pale yellow is R-two.
R-two, yeah.
And this yellow is R-one. So he's just outside the R-two. Changes at Griffin Lane. I don't know if there's something in writing that explains that?
The current zoning?
Yeah, what zoning, when is that from?
I could pull it from, I don't know when I, that might have been three months ago, but, so, town of East Fishkill zoning map, according to Dutchess County Government, it shows the same, the colors. I don't know if it printed out differently, but, so, it is...
This is R-one.
Well, maybe, 'cause the R, here's the R-two zone.
Yeah, so just...
I don't know who colored it red. That's the problem.
There's a B-one in there, too.
No, I believe it's...
That's a B-one property.
I believe it's...
That's zoning two. That's where you have, next to eighty-four.
Twenty-two people talking at one time.
You come over the overpass on, over eighty-four, and you have that plaza there.
That's over here.
Those businesses there.
All right. Tom's memo says it's in an R-two.
I know.
So, not for nothing, but I'm gonna rely on our attorney.
Well, the, the point is, if we consider it an R-two and we go ahead with it, and it meets all the setback requirements, does it make a difference?
Both four seventy and four seventy-two Shenandoah are located in the R-two zone. That's, Tom's memo says that.
I know that.
Sorry. Here's your...
I was just, he was explaining that, so I wanted to take a look at what he was holding in his hand.
Understood. No, I agree, but we'd need the attorney to go back and do that review, so, 'cause it's Tom's memo that this board has to rely on.
Correct.
Well, my question is, if it's harder than R-two, and his memo's indicating that as long as he meets the setback requirements, it's okay, then the setback requirement should be not more stringent than the R-one, right?
No, there, it'd be easier in there.
I'm saying so.
And but even if the lot was an R-zone, R-one at the time the lot was created, which is what Tom thinks it is, it only has to meet the setback requirements of the R-one. The dilemma this board has to think about is, this is once again, an undersized lot.
Yes.
That then, what can these owners do on their property, and then are they gonna have to come back for other variances?
And, and how do we do that like we did before on the other property? I understand that.
Right, because remember that the builder just went ahead and built, and didn't tell the owner, the, the, the actual house owner, that the property had such limitations, and then they had to come back in here for how many variances?
My, my point is that we could go ahead and address that for the R-two, and we'll be safe if it ends up being an R-one, right?
Well, I don't think there's any que, Tom's...
I don't think it has to hold up his application.
Tom's clear that it meets, it just has to meet the setbacks for an R-one, irregardless of what the zoning is.
Okay.
Okay? It has to meet the, the setback requirement, and it, it's, it appears that it does.
Whether it's R-one or R-two.
Whether, right, exactly. So, the, but again, the question then becomes, um, does the future owner of this house then have the ability to truly enjoy their house as, you know, so part of that's gonna go, what's the, what is the actual lot? Do you, do we get a, do we have a...
It's point seven, I mean, acres, so it's very...
No, I get that. What's the layout that you're proposing?
Yeah, I think there should be a proposed lot plan in your package. If not, I have...
Yeah, there's two maps here. I'm not sure. I see a site plan and a, what's the other one?
So I think on the site, um...
On the site plan is where the house is? There's, it's here. I have it, Tara, so we don't have to, so there's not enough. Okay, so you do actually lay out a proposed house?
Right.
A proposed four-bedroom house that meets the setbacks, fifty feet back. What's the square footage of this house? What's the...
Uh, I don't know the exact one on that, but it's probably about eighteen hundred, somewhere between eighteen hundred and two thousand. If it's a four-bedroom, then it'd be two thousand fifty, something like that.
Okay, and so based on what you've got, you've got a nice backyard that, except for the fact that you're putting a septic in the middle of it, that the owners would be able to put, they'd be able to put shed. I mean, it appears that they should be able to use the lot.
Correct, because, I mean, you're bringing the house in the front, and you're meeting the fifty-two, a fifty-foot front setback, front yard setback, so anything that they're gonna construct, whether it's a swimming pool, or a shed, or something, it'll be all in the backyard anyway, 'cause there's nothing available in the front area, so...
Yeah, 'cause this one isn't as bad as the last one, 'cause that one had road frontage and all sides.
Right, four front, four front yards, yes.
Correct, correct.
So, at least, this is an existing lot, and with the proposed house actually on here, it looks like the owners can even still do things with the house.
In the backyard.
Okay.
Motion to advertise.
Thank you. Okay, so a motion to advertise, a second?
Second.
Okay, so in the time between now and the public hearing, we'll have our attorneys do the research on really what the actual zoning is.
Okay.
Um, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll see you next month?
For a public hearing?
For a public hearing?
In January.
Sorry, January, thank you.
Okay.
Pam will give you your instructions about a sign, 'cause there's gotta be a sign on the property there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and this is an existing lot, so you don't need to sign it at the second, at the original lot. Just, just on this lot, not at...
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Okay, wow. Uh, where did this come from?
Uh, that came for the, with the map. The zoning map.
Oh.
Can we give it back to him?
So is this your, sorry, excuse me, sir, is this your...
It is.
Table? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, again, there is no items six, seven, and our eight this evening, so we're up to item number nine. Appeal three eight nine nine one, T-Mobile. T-Mobile Northeast is requesting a special permit to replace six panel antennas and install three remote radio units to the existing tower located eight, eight eighty-eight, Route eighty-two, the Hopewell Recreation Center pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-seven A of the zoning ordinance. T-Mobile. Do they need to be here? The question is, in our review, in our staff review of this, they're just changing out antennas that ultimately are gonna end up being smaller than what's there now.
Right, and, um, this, according to the applicant, falls under the Middle Class Tax Relief Act, and if, once something falls under that act, then the town is forced to approve it, and if they don't approve it in sixty days, it's automatically approved. So it's sort of this circular system where I, it's going to get approved one way or the other. It's very ministerial, actually.
So they actually give us a, in, within their package, there's actually, and we get to see what these new antennas are gonna look like, so we actually looked at them and saw that they're smaller. Uh, we couldn't see exactly what an RRU, the radio, remote radio unit, looked like, to see what that size is, but it really looks like what the actually is on the bulk. Um, I'll tell you exactly which plan to look at. It's... Um, is there's an existing antenna plan? Wow, the way this thing got stapled.
C one oh one?
It is C five oh one. So you can see the existing antenna plan and then the new. So the impact is, like, really de minimis. So, doesn't need a public hearing. We just, the board, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the upgrade to the tower.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, this is at the rec center, so there's not even really neighbors to... Okay.
You wanna make a motion to refund their escrow?
Refund?
Their escrow?
Oh, sure. Do I, so, along the lines of that, do I have a motion to refund their escrow account, what, the balance of the escrow account?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so okay and okay for refund. Okay, good. Moving on, item number ten, Appeal three eight nine two Lockwood. Gregory Lockwood, three twenty-nine Stormville Mountain Road. Stormville is requesting a five-foot front line variance for an existing twenty-four foot by twenty-six foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
How are you?
We're good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
So, you're back?
Yes.
So, in, what year? We approved a variance for your property.
Fifteen, I think.
Yeah, just a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And somehow the garage got built closer to the?
I think my tape measure was broken.
What?
I think my tape measure was broken.
Well.
I don't know, I don't know what happened.
The way your original plan shows is that the back of the garage was supposed to line up like halfway through your existing house.
That was hand-drawn on, and I don't know why it was drawn on that way.
And now it appears that the back of the garage is really the front of your, frontline of your house.
That was one of the variances I went for, to have the garage in the frontline of the house.
But not the whole garage, it was a portion of the garage in front of it?
No, it was the, it was the whole garage. I mean, I understand it was hand-drawn on the plan that way, but I don't know how it made it that way. But it was supposed to be the front of, the back of the garage was in front of the house, that's why.
This is, I do remember, this is the one I went and did a site visit on.
Yes.
Okay, all right, because too many things happened between.
I know, and, and once you got there and I explained to you, you understood what I was trying to do.
Right, oh, because your backyard sloped down, it was wet down there, there, okay, now I do specifically remember your property. There was even some play equipment in the back there.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right, yeah, you, you did not have a whole lot of options, because.
Exactly, that's why I asked you to come over.
It immediately after the end of your driveway, essentially, it just dropped?
Yes.
Okay, it's safe enough for somebody to walk down there, but you would have.
It was soft.
Right, it was definitely wet, but you would have had to build it up significantly for you to push it back. That's why we had to put it, move it up closer. And the size of the garage itself was built as it was permitted for? So you didn't make it any bigger?
I didn't make it any bigger, no.
I think the question probably was, did you, did you measure from your property line or did you measure from the edge of pavement? That's what it appears may have been the difference.
I, I, yeah, I made a mistake, but yeah, um, yeah.
Okay, so again, having been out to this site and having told the board at that time, this was a difficult site to work with, it does dramatically drop off, you know, safely for somebody to walk, but not for, not for a building, you would have had to build it up significantly. So I'm okay with this additional five-foot variance.
Do you have a metal storage shed still there?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a metal storage shed in the back?
Yes.
How big is a shed?
I think eight by eight.
Okay.
Why, what's your concern?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just wondering, a motion to advertise?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Pam, do you still have your sign?
I don't think so.
Okay, see Pam, she'll get you your information, we'll see you in January. Okay, item number 11, Appeal 3893 Milbrook Properties. Milbrook Properties LLC, doing business as Mario's Bread, is requesting an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming building located at 857 Route 82, Hope Well Junction, in order to build a proposed addition and a nine-foot rear line variance, a nine-foot frontline variance, and a nine-foot sideline variance for the existing and proposed structure pursuant to Section 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi, how's everybody?
Good, how are you, Mark?
Good, good to be back.
All right, so this is the first time we're seeing this, if you don't mind taking us through, your easel's a little?
Yeah, it's a little whacked. This is Mario's bread, as everybody knows, it's also the eye care facility in the front. Sorry about that, these are my crib notes. What Mario wishes to do, currently, he has a bread machine, I don't know if anybody's been there and able to look into the back, but he has a sizable bread machine that, he was going to try to set up here, but we needed to raise the roof just a bit. He's never done it, he really didn't like the way it was set up. They've got another machine that they can actually use, which they want to be able to put in this area, this expansion. This is not for patron use, as everybody knows, if you've been there, patron use is pretty much localized to this area only, so there's really no.
There's a little park there now, or whatever you want to call it.
There's grass.
Junction something.
Correct, there's a grass area there.
So that's where you're proposing to put it?
Correct.
Not going to be any closer to the street line there, it's going to line up with the existing building?
Right, that's the issue, right now, the setback, the existing building is within the setback.
And that building's been there for forever, so.
Since they made bread. So they, he wants to expand it to the west, and Mr. Pinicio also owns the property to the west, so.
Yeah, so it's just a grass area, there's no parking there, you're not displacing any parked cars or anything like that.
Correct.
We want to help any businesses expand, so.
Oh, he'd be happy.
Motion to advertise.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we will see you next month, all right, we'll see you in January, oh my gosh.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, yes, you'll need a sign, yes. Okay, I have two people here for one application, so. Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I have no students. Okay. All right, number 12, Appeal 3894 Ashley, John Ashley, 338 Stormville Mountain Road. Stormville is requesting a variance to allow an existing accessory apartment to remain in a detached garage, which was built in 2000, while his house, which was destroyed by fire, is rebuilt pursuant to Section 194-91 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so the first issue that this board has to deal with is the fact that the application for the accessory apartment was previously denied by the zoning board. And so for the zoning board to consider this, we need a unanimous vote of this board for its reconsideration. So, somebody want to make a motion? Do we want to hear a little bit more about it first?
I'd hear a little bit more.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the, as everybody knows, the house was destroyed in the fire. Currently, there's a existing garage in the rear, which has a a undocumented apartment on the second floor, which they would like to use while they're reconstructing the house, with the understanding that prior to the CO, that any of the plumbing will be removed and the apartment will be abandoned.
How long has the apartment been there?
Since, I think it was 2000, we applied for that.
Okay, the board here denied it in 2005, so you probably.
2005.
Okay, so you, did you, when you built the garage in 2000, you put the apartment in at that point?
Uh, it was sometime after that.
Okay, so the appliances and everything else of what were already in there? Before you moved, you, your family moved in there now because of the conditions related to the fire?
The apartment was put there to house my in-laws, which were in, you know, a state of health problems and could not go anywhere else. So that's why it was originally done.
I understand that, the reason, I'm not sure the question was answered. Was the apartment made after the denial or before the denial?
I don't know the exact date of.
Well, but you know, you came in front of the board and asked for the accessory use.
Yeah.
Did it exist at the time that you were before the board?
I think it was before that.
Okay. And it has existed continuously even after the board denied it? The apartment existed, whether anybody lived there or not?
Yes.
Okay, so what assurance do we have that this will not continue to exist after?
Well, we've worked with the building department, you know, obviously, before the CO is, oh, you're saying, I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding your question. After it's dismantled, you mean?
How, what assurance do we have that it would be dismantled? It wasn't dismantled after the zoning board denied it?
I think Brian Stokoz, who wrote the letter, basically spelled out that we would work with the building department, we would certify that it was actually done. Yeah, so.
When you dismantle it.
What does that mean?
Well, you're going to take out, you're going to take out.
You take out the plumbing?
Right.
You take out the electrical upstairs?
Yeah, I would, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm professional, but. We're not going to take the apart, I'm sorry, we're not going to take the building down, we're not going to.
Yeah, you're not limiting the space, but it's going to be vacant storage space? No appliances, no bathrooms, no heating?
Nothing habitable, we understand.
Okay.
Has it been habitable for the last 10 years?
Habitable?
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, because it says very clearly, this was dated August of 2005, and the application was denied, and the reasons were given at that end, so that, but then, it has continued since that time.
Yes, I, I don't think there's any issue here that they did something they weren't supposed to do.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
So we're looking at it at this point from, we want it out, so we can either take the position that.
We deny, we just don't consider it, and the building department makes it go away now.
Yes, or.
Or.
We're charitable and we allow them to live there while they rebuild. That's the issue.
And how long would it, and how long would it take to rebuild the house?
I have a deadline of December 10th of next year.
So it's almost a year of.
But what, what's the habitability, how do we know the house is actually safe, the garage is safe, the accessory apartment is safe for you to live in now if it's never had inspection for its habitability?
Well.
Was there a plumbing inspection, was there an electrical inspection, were any of those inspections done at any point?
There was an electrical inspection.
There was, okay, that's helpful. Underwriters, New York State Underwriters Inspection?
Yeah, whatever.
Would have to be.
Yeah.
Central Hudson would activate the.
Right.
So.
I think, I think the issue here right now is that, me as the owner, I'm in a sticky situation where I need somewhere to live while my home is being reconstructed from the fire. And I need to move ahead because I am under time constraints.
Okay.
From the town. I need a CO by next December 10th, because I have a variance on my original home. And that's.
That gets me to my, do you, did the original home have a CO?
Yes.
It did, so the original home was inspected, the cause of the fire was?
Undetermined.
Because again, it calls into question the construction.
That's, that's the question that we're asking, so.
The original home.
Because you, you had something that, and you're not very clear on this, and maybe I understand why you might want to say too much, I don't know. But again, it comes down to me is what kind of, how charitable you want to be when you haven't followed what was law and what the decision of the board was before, so. But then the question is asked, if we say, yeah, you can live there without a CO, is it safe? Are we asking, permitting you, sort of giving us, giving you a stamp, I don't want to create any liabilities, I don't think we'll have a liability here, if we say you can live there and you don't have a CO, how do we know it's safe? Not that the CO guarantees the house is safe, but maybe one thing we could ask, I don't know, is.
We'd certainly work with the building.
Go in and certify and inspect it, and they give their certification that it appears safe, that may be an additional safeguard for the board, if we want to go that route.
Mark, have you been in the building?
I have not.
Okay.
But I mean, we'd be happy to do the inspections, I mean, if there's an underwriters certification sticker on the, on the panel, I mean, that's, let's say, half the battle, but, you know, we can certainly do the rest.
Was any of the construction done by you yourself, or was it all done, the plumbing was done by a licensed plumber, or?
Everything was.
You don't have to be licensed in Dutch, I know that, but, you know.
Everything was done by, you know.
Tradespeople?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful.
I mean, I would echo those concerns, but yeah, I think if they'll go in and certify that it's habitable, then at least we could consider it, we have to make, decide whether we will stand on.
The dilemma that this board has, again, is that we have not approved any housing over garage, detached garages. And we've been very consistent with that, recognizing that the town changed the code specifically, not wanting housing above detached garages. So I had Pam actually look back and research whether any had been approved, and there have not been any. So, because the code was changed in 1985 to limit and restrict no housing in garages, detached garages built after then. So.
And to a certain extent, even if we okay them staying there, we're not really approving it. And they know it's going to be torn down.
Well, exactly, the part of our condition would have to be that it would, the apartment must be.
Habitable.
Well, habitable now, but then dismantle.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
And, and I don't think you can say it before you get the CO, I think it has to be in conjunction with getting this. Once you get the CO, then you can dismantle the apartment. Otherwise, you're going to put yourself in a position where you don't have a place to live.
Or give a reasonable, I don't know, 30 days, whatever, after the CO.
Right, but.
Absolutely.
Then how does the building department, we don't, we don't issue TCOs, right?
Sometimes we do.
Sometimes we do, so in this case.
An asphalt situation, an engineer would certify that it was constructed properly, the smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors, and sufficient heat.
For the garage?
No, I think he's talking for the house, correct? Right, Rick?
For the garage.
For the garage, what we're getting at right now is the garage, but now.
She wants to make sure it's habitable.
Okay.
Right, but, but for, I don't want to give up the TCO on the garage until he's got the, a TCO or something, but I, on the house, but I want to be able to give you some hook.
The building department will issue a temporary.
On new construction.
Well, can we ask for some sort of bond or something?
We typically don't issue temporary COs.
That's why, that's why I was asking the question. What I'm trying to get at is if we give them 30 days after they get the CO, I want to give the building department some hook to be able to go and actually ensure, you can't yank back a CO. So what hook do we have?
Wouldn't it be a violation at that point?
Well, it can be revoked, but we don't like to do that.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, because again, one is not really related to the other. So can we have them put up Jim's suggestion of putting up a bond?
Yeah, but how do you, what's the amount of the bond?
How do we enforce it?
Well, not even that, I mean, how, what's the amount? Why wouldn't there be a violation if he, if he continued to have the apartment, right, I mean.
That's the right of going?
Right now, there's a problem too, and just that, you can't, you know, we technically can't live in it under New York State Building Code without certificate of occupancy, and the ZBA can't vary the New York State Building Code.
Well, that's what we're asking about, the temporary CO, so.
So we can't tell you where to go home to tonight, okay?
Is there a definition of what temporary is? In other words, does it?
Is there a time limit?
Two months, six months?
It still has to be safe. We won't, we seldom issue temporary COs, and if we do, it has to be safe.
I understand.
It has to have components there to make it safe.
That wasn't my question, is the word temporary defined by six months or something?
I believe it's six months.
Because if he's, if he needs a place to live for the next year, it's what Jim's point is, the TCO goes beyond the scope of what he needs.
I believe there's a timeframe on.
Can we get a CO for the garage? Can we just file for a C of O?
I'm not.
We're not going to, they don't resend it. Can we issue two temporary?
Well, no, wait, hold on, hold on, we're jumping around.
Issue two temporary COs? Can you renew, can you renew a TCO?
That would be up to the administrators, I don't know.
Or do we have, you come back in after the, before the end of the six months is up, and you come back to us and show us you're on schedule and?
We could do that.
Because your application said something about six to eight months, not a year.
Well, I think the one thing we got to factor into this is DEP watershed, and that's anybody's guess.
Oh, so you've got to go to the watershed inspector general?
Well, we're down there, yeah. So we've, we've had one meeting with them, and we need to verify perks with them, and I think other than that, we're okay, but, you know, that's in the world of who knows when.
Right.
So, that's why I think it's important we stick to the December next year deadline. But I'm not certain why we couldn't do a C of O for this building, build the house, get a COO for it with the promise.
And you don't have the violation.
I don't have a violation.
If the CO doesn't expire on the garage, then you don't have a violation later on.
Permanent CO has to be revoked by the town board.
And temporary, we could.
But if he voluntarily says, you know, give me 30 days and I'll dismantle this, we'd have the building department inspect it, you see what I'm saying? I, I know this is all on, on the, on a promise.
We don't want to give any documentation that appears to approve its use permanently.
I just wanted to.
CO does that.
I don't want it to.
Yeah, I'm not inclined to consider that.
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
Okay. Just wanted to say one thing, a board member did come out and inspect the apartment.
A board member? Back in 2005, or?
It was, I don't know the exact date, but it was in early 2000.
So it was in connection with your application before the zoning board at that time?
Yep.
Okay.
But he wouldn't have.
Well, ultimately it was denied, one person it looked like.
He wouldn't be there to certify that it was.
Oh, I, I understand, I'm just, I just want to let it, let it be known that a board member came out.
I, I understand that, because it says the vote was three for the motion and one against the motion.
Yes.
So, so that maybe that one person who did the.
Is okay with its use.
Correct, and so.
But the bottom line is, we still have to have a public hearing, so we can't even allow you to use this apartment for the next.
Does this need a public hearing, though? I'm just curious.
January of 2009.
Does it need it?
No, my question is, do we need it?
Yes.
Well, I, I think you would, right?
Why, though, I'm just curious.
Because you're asking for a variance to use a.
I'm asking for a variance to utilize.
A structure that was built after 1985.
Okay.
Because if there's somebody else in the town who is, who has a similar situation, they can say, we have done it or we haven't done it.
Okay.
So you, you, we can't allow its use for the next 60 days.
All right, well, I'm, I'm just curious where it leaves us, but let's go ahead if it's okay with the board, set the public hearing, and then, you know, we'll have to decide.
Okay, we, we haven't even had the unanimous vote yet to reconsider the application.
No, I'm saying if it's okay with the board.
But I'm not sure we have a means yet of even.
I mean, you can issue it, I believe the code would allow you to issue a temporary CO for a period of time, but if, I mean, the question that we have to deal with here, and I mean, because there, is that if we do, you know, approve the accessory apartment, is there a way to take it away, once it, you know, we sort of grant this, make this grant? So what the board could even do is, you can make the decision now, if you guys want, to say, okay, we, we're making, we're agreeing to re. to say, okay, we, we're making, we're agreeing to rehear this, and this, that would have to be unanimous.
Right.
And then if you wanna modify the original denial, that again, would also have to be unanimous. So even if just one of you in the end decides after you rehear this that you don't think it's a good idea, then you wouldn't be able to get his accessory apartment approved. It's a two-step process, if you decide.
But in the meantime, Mark can at least go in and inspect it.
Take a look at it.
He can assure us of its habitability to be able to provide documentation to the building department that at least an engineer has inspected it. Um, realistically, if you, your application says you should be able to rebuild in six to seven months, so that's assuming you get all the appropriate approvals. So the six months may actually work with a TCO, starting in, do you have your building permit right now to start building? Have you started? You can't because-
Can't because of DEP.
Get onto the watershed.
Been filed.
Yeah.
Shoot.
The plans are done. Everything, I believe, is downstairs. It's just this issue popped up. The DEP wants to get verification of what was in.
The issue is that they don't have records of my septic system at all. Previous, no records.
Health department has nothing?
Health department does not have any records.
Plus, you added to it also with the apartment.
Well, there was a separate septic system for the apartment added, but the original house septic system, there were no records. So there becomes a-
Who put it in? You're the, the builder or a plumber?
Well, I bought the place in 1990.
It was already existing?
Sure.
The house was there already?
Yes.
Wow.
He's added to it.
Okay.
I did add to it, but I didn't add any bedrooms, and it came-
Well, you did when, with the accessory apartment.
Yeah, but I'm saying that has nothing to do with the house. It wasn't added.
Well, it does with the septic. Unless the, does the accessory apartment have its own septic?
Yes.
Oh, and he didn't add to the septic.
Yes, and no, it ties into it.
Does not tie into it.
It has its own fields, it has its own-
You have this tank up there that ties into the leach fields of the existing house.
They don't tie into the existing leach fields.
So you have a second set of fields.
Do you have board health approval for that septic system?
No.
That's the point. That's the point about expanding the use.
No DEP approval.
Yeah, that's DEP's gonna have a problem with, two septics.
Pump out, the five-year pump out, I don't believe is ever done.
Probably nobody's staying there, but yeah.
Have you considered putting a trailer on site during reconstruction?
Why would I when I have something there that I-
Well, it, your something there hasn't been approved, though, so that's the problem.
Yeah. It's, it's a, a structure that is gonna take up space for my building that I don't have. Uh, you know, I've got a limited amount of space there now. Uh, I can just, you know.
Right.
See, this, I mean, I mean, you're really asking a lot of the board, you know, but from a lawyer point of view, when somebody comes in and asks the court for something, they have to have what they call clean hands. If you don't have clean hands, you can't ask for any relief from the court. You don't have particularly clear, clean hands here, so we're really struggling to try to come up with a way as to whether we can help you and, you know. Well, I think we all, as neighbors, wanna give you a hand here.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
We gotta be very careful about how it's done, and we don't wanna be seen as, one, approving something that's not approvable in a town, and three, whether we're approving something that you've, you know, violated other provisions of other codes of other government entities as far as your septic systems and everything.
Well-
So, and whether that's gonna complicate your building, your new house. I, you speak to your engineer about that. I, I can't, don't know about all that, but-
Was the house insured for the fire or not?
Yes, it was.
So insurance is compensating for living, living expenses and things like?
So that should be able to accommodate another apartment, then?
It should be, yes. Um, it's, it's just convenient to not have to, you know, be out of the area. Um, you know, what I'm asking of you people, uh, you know, it definitely does look bad for me. I see that. Um, and as I've explained to whoever's been onsite or anybody else that has been involved in this, is that I wanna reconstruct my home in the time period allotted, and I wanna make everything right, you know, in the end. You know, whatever I have to do, um, I will absolutely do it, you know, faithfully to whatever needs to be done. Um-
My incentive to consider this application is to make sure that accessory use is gone.
Right.
That you can't use it, which may mean tearing out the septic system, too. All that.
That's fine with me. I, I have no problem with that.
That's my only incentive, really, to say that you have the use of the garage apartment. That's my incentive. I don't know.
I have no problem with, with any, you know, things like that, that just demands that you want, um-
What's the square footage of the unit?
Which?
Of this accessory apartment.
Sorry, I don't have the exact square footage on here.
Around 1,200 square feet.
Okay, so it's at least, it meets at least the minimum 600 square feet that's required. Okay, just making sure. I don't-
I mean, I think- What the inspection of Mark here, you know, what, that, if you would, if you would accept the inspection of the engineer, um-
The vic, garage itself got a variance for where it's located?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it goes into these-
Well, it's got its own septic.
Oh, is that a-
Where is, I see the septic in the front for the house. Where is the septic for the garage?
Yeah, this is the one.
See, it, it shows on this, it, it goes into that, Rick's right, it does, this sketch does show.
Yeah, it does feed into the other one.
See, it shows the tank.
No, it's a go, and it's got a tiny little one on the by side.
Oh, it's got one little.
That was kind of-
Does it connect?
All right, yeah, it's not. How many garage, how many bedrooms is the accessory apartment?
Uh, it says one.
Portable, portable garage. What is the portable garage?
Oh, it's probably vinyl, vinyl shed. Yeah.
What?
That's gonna disappear, too, right?
The vinyl structure?
That's not allowed?
Oh.
Really? If it needs to be disappeared, it will disappear.
How long has it been there?
Forever.
It needs to disappear. It's allowed for six months. That's all it's allowed, so it's a temporary structure.
Okay.
So that needs to disappear as well. All right, so reconsideration of the board. I agree with Jim. I think this is the way to clean up the property. There's some issues that you gotta, it's gotta be inspected, it's gotta be-
Understood.
And we've gotta be able to work with a TCO that, but that, that's all getting ahead of ourselves. Right now, right now, we've gotta make sure we even want, the board wants to consider this. So do I have a motion to reconsider the application?
I would make that motion to reconsider for the reasons I set forth before, yeah.
Okay. Sir, second?
Second.
Mary, votes as follows. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Aye. And myself, aye. So we will reconsider our application now. Based on the information that we've seen, are we okay to set this up for a public hearing?
I am.
Motion to advertise.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Again, unanimous, it has to be unanimous. So, Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So you can go forward and advertise. Sam will, Pam will give you your instructions. I can't stop. And then we will see you in January, but in the meantime, Mark, you have to make sure that the building department has the level of whatever they need to- And then in the meantime, to the extent that you can get your building permit actually approved, because you should be able to build a house in less than six months, so.
You know, six, six to eight months is, is reasonable.
Okay.
Motion to a 1,500 square foot house. Pardon me?
What is it?
It's a 3,500 square foot house, so six to eight months is reasonable.
Okay. All right, so we will see, again, we'll see you in January, then. Okay? Motion?
Go ahead, Jen.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Happy holidays, everyone.